Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 24th, 2016, to order at 6:32. We'd ask that you stand for a vacation from Bishop Shaver, St. Andrews Angelique Church, and please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Bishop?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for the governance of men to take responsibility for their communities. We thank you especially for Maryville, for the history here of nearly 50 years and more. May your peace be on each of us as we seek to serve you as best we know how. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Spann?
President.
Uselak?
Present.
Baron?
Here.
Pettit?
Here.
Lamarcus?
Here.
Hardaway?
Here.
Six, President. We have a quorum, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Councilwoman Uselak.
Okay, it appears to me we have two letters here under communications, addressed to Chief Joseph Poot Petrush, Maryville Town Council, from Commander Kajirma?
Kajirna.
Okay, Kajirna. The subject, citizens' recognition letter. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Roger Townsend and Glenda Townsend for their assistance with a two-year-old child who nearly drowned. On 5/10/16, at approximately 3 o'clock PM, Roger Townsend reported he heard a female screaming for help outside of his apartment. Roger observed a female holding a child who appeared to be lifeless. Roger told his wife, Glenda, to call 911 while he ran outside to start compressions on the child's stomach. Roger reported that water started coming out of the child's mouth. Both Roger and Glenda continued lifesaving efforts until MPD Officer Nash arrived on the scene. These two good Samaritans chose to step up and help someone in need. Had they ignored the call for help, the situation may have had a tragic ending. On behalf of the Maryville Police Department, I would like to thank Roger and Glenda Townsend for their efforts to help save the child of a two-year-old child, to help save the life of a two-year-old child, excuse me, respectfully submitted, Commander D. Kajirma. Okay? Then we have a second letter here. To Commander D. Kajirna, from Lieutenant K. Horvath, regarding commendation, commendation, jeez, I got messed up on that word. I would like to take this opportunity to bring to your attention the exemplary efforts of one of the officers under my command. On today's date, approximately 3:10 PM, Maryville Fire, Prompt EMS, and Maryville MPD units were dispatched to Hickory Ledge Lake Apartments in reference to baby drowning in the lake. In parentheses, 16 ME-09804, some type of a code for Officer Nash, arrived within a matter of minutes. He located several people and an unresponsive, very young child in the rear of the building near the lake. The child was not breathing. He immediately began CPR on the child and was able to clear the airway. The child gasped and struggled to take a couple of breaths. Officer Nash feverishly continued resuscitation efforts. A short time later, MFD and paramedics arrived on the scene. They immediately took over and transported the child to Broadway Methodist Hospital. As of the time, as of this time, I am typing this, the child is still alive and was flown to Advocate Christ Medical Center in Oaklawn, Illinois. Officer Nash's expedient response and quick actions played a significant role in saving this child's life. I am recommending that his duties and outstanding effort be recognized with a commendation for meritorious police state. Officer Nash is a fine example of what it means to be a Maryville police officer. I truly hope that his fellow officers look at the situation and are inspired by Officer Nash's performance. I am very proud to have such an officer under my command. I would also like to request that Officer Nash's action be taken into consideration when contemplating recommendations for Officer of the Year for 2016. I thank you for your time and attention in regards to this matter. This is signed by Lieutenant K. Horvath, badge number 220, and the copies have been sent to Chief Joseph Petrush, Commander Jeff Rice, and Officer C. Nash. That's it. This was dated May 10.
Thank you. Uselak, one of the things I'd like to see, chief and chief, is that some type of plaque or something for the Townsend family, so that we can bring them out and recognize them publicly for what they did at our next council meeting on June 14th. Okay?
You need a motion?
No. Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Get a plaque of some type.
Right, yeah. Okay, and let's go with something that can stand on a mantle as opposed to something that they're gonna hang on the wall that they'll never hang.
Nice recycled glass.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Get with Matt, because Matt knows how to get the recycled glass type thing, which is beautiful, and they'll appreciate that more than if you give them something to hang on the wall. Okay? Anything else on the communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations? At this time, consent agenda, council payable register, voucher approval for May 24th, and approval of the minutes of the town council for May 10.
Second?
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve the council payable register voucher for May 24th, along with the minutes from the town council meeting of May 10. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a budget and finance meeting before the council meeting this evening to begin talks with the FOP on a new contract. The contract is getting ready to expire at the end of the year. We heard their proposal. Councilperson Uselak's Committee of Public Safety will work with Mr. Bishemi on some of the details of the contract. They made a salary proposal to us, which Budget and Finance will take under consideration, along with an analysis of the rest of the civilian employees, and we'll probably have another budget and finance meeting sometime in June or July, and then Councilwoman Uselak can schedule her committee meeting appropriately.
Thank you.
The other item I have, Mr. President, and that kind of gets into Mr. Span's committee, I don't know, Bruce, if we want to couch this subject now, is the proposed wheel tax, excise tax presentation you made up for us.
I was gonna do that before or during...
The ordinances?
The ordinances.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, that's good. Public Works, Councilman Span?
Nothing, I'm just waiting on the wheel tax.
I've got something. I just recently received all the estimates for the roads for paving that we'd submitted to Robinson Engineering. Looking at the numbers, if we use the RDC bond that we talked about that was over 1.4 million, and we use the money that we received from the state, the Loet money, or Loet money, take out for the road asset management plan, I think we're gonna have enough money to do the streets that we had talked about doing. We're gonna be really, really close. So, long story short, I'm gonna be getting hold of everyone here real soon, double checking on the streets, making sure that that's where we're at, and then we're gonna let Washington Kelly go at it.
What was the Loet check amount, Bruce? Was it 672,000?
Counsel, the full check issued to the town was 674,523 dollars and 40 cents, of which 75% or... Of which 75% of that amount, which is 505,892 dollars, must be used for roads and infrastructure. The remaining 25% or approximately...
59,000.
Is that what it is?
Somewhere around that.
169,000 may be used for any use that the town desires. The 25% that's not restricted can be placed in the general fund. Gene will have to create a special Loet Fund 257 to deposit and then spend out of the 75% fixed money.
That's already been done. Yeah, we had that meeting about a month ago, and that fund was already created.
All right, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. The total is 2,074,523. My motion is that we use all of that money for local road and street paving, minus the asset management plan done by Robinson Engineering.
I second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we use the entire Loet money...
Which addresses Mr. Bishemi's 25%. We're just gonna use that all for paving.
Exactly, all of that.
Right, is that okay, Bruce?
That's perfect.
All right.
And we add it to the bond, and we'll be able to...
For paving? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. One thing I'd like to comment on Public Works, I had the opportunity, you know, we got a lot of tall grass in the community now, where people aren't cutting their grass, and we had a couple of summer health employees that were, that cut grass yesterday at two residents in my ward. And I've seen summer health cut grass before, and I've seen what they did yesterday, and they're to be commended for the job that they did.
I thought you were going down another call.
No, they did an excellent job, because both yards were probably 14, 16. And, you know, normally when they go through and cut it like that, when they get through with it, it looks like a weed field. But this, when they did it this time, it was almost like they went over it a couple times to ensure that everything was done, and the sidewalks were clean, and there was no grass laying around. So I've just, you could pass it on, Bruce, to Kevin and Rich Nowes, and tell them that they, you know, those guys did an excellent job yesterday. I was concerned about it, but as I rode through there last night, and again today, they did an excellent job, and they are to be commended for what they did.
Oh, yeah, one more thing, Bruce. That lady, Darlene Rice, where the car went through her house, her lawn has not been mowed in months, two, three months. She's staying in a hotel, and she's alone. So I don't know if you checked in.
Actually, I went through there the other day, and I noticed that she hadn't mowed her grass.
When? Because I went there the other day.
Oh, she hadn't, I'm sorry.
No, okay. It's very long.
So I need to, we need to get with Vicki to send her a letter stating, even if she's living in a hotel right now, she's still responsible for getting her grass mowed.
And I did talk to her about the flashing sign that you had recommended.
And I think that'll solve any of her concerns.
I think so, at this time, but she is very upset, too, you know, losing everything.
Well, speaking of that, while, since we're on this subject, we will, the town will cut grass, and we will send the person the bill. If we have to go cut somebody's grass that resides in a residence, we'll do it.
Once they get one bill, they're gonna find somebody else to mow their grass.
Well, maybe that's what we need.
And if, and Councilman, as you alluded to, and if the bill for mowing the grass remains unpaid, it will become a lien on the real estate.
It becomes a lien, or it'll be turned over to a collection agency.
But isn't that why we raise the rates like we do?
That's exactly why we raise the rate. And the second thing is, is that because there, I guess Public Works had to go, somebody had a mattress or something that needed to be picked up, and it wasn't picked up, and, you know, Public Works went out there and picked it up. And we will go out there and pick them up, but guess what? We charge you for man-hours, truck usage, and the entire nine yards. You'll get a bill from the town for that. The other communities do it. We have to figure out ways to be creative in what we do, because we don't buy, we've got employees that, you know, do a good job for us, and we're just trying to maintain the integrity of the community, and we cannot maintain it if people leave mattresses, or grass, or whatever, go undone, and we don't address it. So if we start tacking these fines on the people, sending them bills, when they get a bill from the town of Maryville for 500 bucks for cutting your grass, I guarantee you, you go out and buy a craftsman, and you cut that fella yourself.
Yep. Oh, and I wanted to thank Bruce, too, for putting up the no parking sign on 75th Avenue, where the traffic was coming and going.
Does it seem to help?
Well, right now, the people that have complained to me, about three or four, they've all called me and said it's helping.
Good.
The apartment dwellers are not parking on that street, which is good. So traffic flow is good, it's coming and going. And the sidewalk, they're very happy with the sidewalk.
Good, good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel affairs, Councilwoman Uselak?
Oh, no report at this time.
Personnel policy, employee benefits, Councilwoman Baron?
I've already been making a list, giving it to Bruce, so he can give Carol a call to let her know in what direction we want to go with the healthcare insurance.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, Councilwoman Uselak?
A no report.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Jan has a few things.
Good evening, just a couple of things I have. First is an update to Forest Hills Park. We've started that project. We've cut down the trees that would impact the playground area, and we've already started the foundation work. We will be shooting grates tomorrow, and that playground will go up and be installed. I received three designs for South Brook Park, and I'm going to be meeting with you, so we can look those over, and you can decide what best would fit for South Brook Park, and we'll go over some prices with you as well for that part. I'd like to talk just for a brief moment about our website. We are not live yet, but we've been doing registrations online. In order for our website to go live, so people in the community can pay for a program, or participate in a program, or a class, or go on a trip, they have to tie into the town's website, Revize. Revize wanted $1,000 just to start the project, and then approximately 200, I think it was $250 a month to retain that. We felt that that was way out of line for what we're trying to do, so since Ruth, our recreation coordinator, has a computer degree, we're actually in the process of building our own website. I would like to thank Ruth and all her efforts. This is gonna save the park department a lot of money. So what will happen is, when you click on Parks and Rec, and I'll let you know when we go live, when you click on Parks and Rec, it will take you to the parks website. From that website, you'll be able to register for any program. So publicly, I would like to thank Ruth for all her time and effort in trying to save the park department and the town of Maryville money by doing most of the work in-house.
I mean, I think that that's great.
And the last thing that I have on my list, it was very beneficial for us to lower the rates for the Prusing Community Center. I'm happy to report that just the month of June, I only have one day available for rent. July, I have nothing but a couple of Sundays. The only thing we're pushing now is our Friday evenings. We're going to open up for Friday evening rentals as well. So it looks that we maximized by lowering the rate a little bit, and more people are calling us for rental, and I will give a full revenue report at the end of the year to show how that has escalated in the park department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good news. That's great to hear. That means that we did something right first time out of the chute.
She's good, she's good.
Mr. President, under Roxanne's committee, last Tuesday, we had the CNO meeting with the residents from Forest Hills. Bruce and I learned some things, I think, didn't we, Bruce?
Oh, yeah, we always learn something, though.
Always learn something from the general public. I do have one request, Bruce, that the chief and I talked about, and this has to do with the tunnel. We are lighting that tunnel under I-65. We either need to do a change order, or bring it back on the council floor. I'd like to buy a camera on each end of that, of that tunnel, right, Joe, for kind of patrolling what's going on. That's a long tunnel underneath I-65.
It's a long tunnel, and I think there needs to be, and you and Bruce can look it up, there's different security procedures they go through with bike trail tunnels on our major highways, and I think you can get some good ideas, and maybe have a couple companies come in real quick and give some bids on the cameras, or the phone system that they can use in the tunnel right either way. Because a lot of people don't carry their phones when they're running, or jogging, or on the bicycles. I think before we end this project, we want to make sure it's a safe project, and make sure that we're not spending any additional funds in the near future when we don't have to grant them.
The two biggest comments we got for the rest of the council's benefits were, "You cut down all my trees and didn't give me enough notice," and the safety of the, which, you know, we told them it's a linear park, Jan, it's, you know, closed from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, you know, no one's gonna be on there, but, you know, we would patrol, and there was an issue of safety and crime, and Bruce and I tried to address that.
A lot of problems we have now when our officers responding to the bike trail, or in the bike trail that goes down from 91st, there's no mile markers unless somebody's put it on a pavement that goes out there and jogs.
You know what?
And I would like to see that there be permanent mile markers on all bike trails in town. That way, when somebody calls 911, we know basically where they're at, instead of going out there and have to look for them.
That's a good idea.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I'm on the NURC Wayfinding Committee, Joe, and we're working on that currently. It had to go out for bid, so of course, when it does, it's along the process, but all of the...
That's probably one of the most important things, because trying to locate somebody that's calling and saying, hey, so-and-so fell and broke their leg, and it's where you at, you know, and it's more complicated now with the centralized dispatch, because they can't even take a call for service, okay? But hopefully, this will help with the fire department, the ambulance service, and the police department.
That's gonna be only the Erie Lacawanna. Once that's completed, I'll show everybody the plans, if we want to do that. The CNO extension, we can certainly do that as well.
As long as the money's available now, I suggest that we get it.
Might as well do it now while we can get it, right? And by the way, Joe, did you notice any, one of the reports were people living in the tunnel? Did you notice anything when you were on the trail?
Like, Bruce had sent me out there yesterday, I went out there with Commander Baron, and they had just broke through the block before they did the survey, and there's no way anybody's gonna live in that tunnel.
Okay, we got that report at the public meeting.
I will tell you guys that there is a guy.
Is there?
Yeah, and...
There's a guy?
Yeah, he lives, he's homeless, he's a roamer, and he does live along the bike trail. Because he reports any crime, glass, or anything that's...
Now, on Erie Lacawanna, or on the CNO?
On mine.
On yours, okay, okay. They were complaining about it.
Well, not mine, but on that path.
The top, the CNO, yeah.
But they broke through that block, they didn't find Al Capone behind there, so...
Is it gonna be lit? What my first question...
The tunnel will be lit.
Will it be vandal food flights?
They should be like...
Probably should be like the Erie Lacawanna, yeah.
And then we want to make sure that it's, I talked to Bruce today, we communicated today, and I says, make sure that they have that anti-graffiti stuff on that tunnel. That way, when it does get sprayed, it's easy to wash off.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
One question for Councilwoman Lamarcus. Do we have applications for the parade? Because people are asking me, and I tell them that it's gonna be on July the 4th, and they say, okay, but...
We do, yeah. I'm receiving, I'm back slowly. The park department is currently in mailing all of the businesses that are in the town of Maryville. There's 1,500 applications going out this week to all the businesses and the churches in the town of Maryville.
Yeah, that's where I've heard some complaint from churches.
We're doing that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great, thank you. Anything else on the Parks and Rec?
Excuse me, not to change the subject, I was also just to make sure that, one, this bike trail's completed, it's most also important that we have porta-potties at certain locations, because that's the most complaints we ever get on the bike trails, is people urinating, runners, and bicyclists have to pull over because there's no available porta-potties.
Okay.
I have one.
Environmental affairs, Councilwoman Baron?
Yes, went to Stormwater Conference, very informing conference to go to. I found out about a lot of recycled products that we can use in the town of Maryville, anywhere from wastewater to stormwater, they last a lot longer. And also, there was the rubber, I'll ask Matt to talk about this one.
Yeah, there's recycled materials out there. We're looking into, some vendors now are offering materials, pipes and things like that, that are made out of 40% recycled plastic. So thinking about partnering with Solid Waste on some of that. Also, they even make rubberized riser rings that are made out of recycled tires. They got the same compression as asphalt, things like that, they're supposed to last a heck of a lot longer, they don't crumble and crack. So usually, the top riser, they use that for. So we want to look into maybe getting more recycled materials as part of our infrastructure. And with that, I think it'd be a good fit to partner with Solid Waste on that, so. And then also, we're moving forward on a drainage improvement project on 7800 Block of Virginia Street. Received final bids, and we'll announce a little better at our next Stormwater Management Board meeting. Ross Meadow Farms Drainage Improvement Project is almost complete, we just have final grading and seeding. So everybody's been very happy about that project and the progress. I spoke at the MS4 annual meeting, we had over 375 attendees. I spoke on illicit discharge ordinances and enforcement, and we have a lot of communities across the state that are looking at how we do things, and trying to replicate that for their programs. And also, we're setting up a two-day rain garden workshop with Purdue Extension. We anticipate the date will be August 30th and 31st at the Stormwater Resource Center.
Anything else on the environmental affairs? Thank you.
Oh, and I want to thank Matt for coming out and checking Kaiser Ditch, where I had that complaint, and you went back in there, and there's a park there, too.
Yes.
Jan and I will be checking out the park tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I don't know, was the Kaiser Ditch cleaned out yet?
It'll be cleaned as of tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Elections and public relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus?
No report.
Thank you. Economic development, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Utility liaison, Councilwoman Baron?
Just so that cap program is still going on, so we're still taking the caps, sorry, Jan. But with your bike trail going in now, we could use some of the benches there. I know with the construction that's gonna go on my end of the bike trail, we won't be able to do the seeding area right now. And then we're also gonna donate the one bench to...
HEPA.
HEPA, thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple women call me from there, and they wanted to know if they should still save the caps.
Yeah, sure.
Good.
We should, we should, we should save them. I mean, they're not, we're not paying full price for the benches, and I think anytime we can cut a cost, I think we should. As a town, we should be financially responsible, and we should promote recycle, 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 reuse, recycle.
Chrissy, I have a question. Has that project started where the, that part of the trail at 91st is going to be shut down?
Not yet.
The Nippsco project?
Not yet.
Can you kind of clue me in on that? I anticipate a lot of people complaining that the trail's closed. That's the first thing, and then the second thing...
We need to make sure that gets put on the website for the town and on your website as well.
Yeah, if I get dates, then that's not a problem. And then, do you want me to just, how long is it? I don't know if I should leave the porta-pot there? I don't want to take it away and then bring it right back, so...
What do you think, Bruce?
Due to the work that Nippsco's doing, did they start already?
She said, no, not yet. I don't know when they started.
They're not supposed to start until the first of the month, and it's supposed to be 90 days.
Okay.
Where's the porta-pot?
It's right on 91st.
I would leave it there, because people are running, and they're, depending on that porta-pot being there, they ran last year, they might not start running or bicycling later in the year, and if they pull up, there's no porta-pot there, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, yeah, I have one there, but because it's gonna be shut down for three months...
Ground Point Side's gonna be shut down as well.
The white trail?
Yeah, yeah, they're...
From all ramps where they park it to...
It's getting all torn.
Yeah, we can discuss this after the meeting, and I'll have the plans out.
I'm kinda confused on it, because who's gonna keep long white trail?
Yeah, I can show you what's going on. Potty talk for one night.
Potty talk.
Believe me, if you got the phone calls on the potty calls, you're talking about it.
Abandoned, abandoned properties, there's a couple things under abandoned properties. The first thing is, there's gonna be, there's a resolution coming later on, under resolutions to talk about some lots, some empty lots on Broadway, 56th Avenue, that are currently up for tax sale. And the reason why we want those lots is because we have to cut them anyway. And so I think that if we can get those lots and combine all three of those lots together and make one lot, then we could probably sell it. And it'd be more advantageous to have one big lot than to have three 25-foot lots that that nobody can do anything with. And right now, Public Works is cutting them because nobody else is cutting them. And it's, Broadway looks horrible right through that little stretch between 57th and 56th Avenue because of those empty lots right there that aren't maintained. So, Attorney Buscemi did do a resolution tonight to contact the commissioners and to get those three lots for us. Then, once we get them to render, then we'll talk about what we need to do to consolidate all of the numbers into one so that we can figure out how best to sell those. And the second thing is, is that we have a quote to tear down the house at 122 West 55th Avenue. We put it out for bid and we come up with three different quotes. The largest one was $27,500. That was the largest one that came from Delta 3. The second one came from Zeiss and Sons, $18,111. And the low one was from Boyd Construction, $12,800. I can make a motion on that lowest one, is that the plan? Yes, sir.
I second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, motioned by Councilman Spann and seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak that we accept the bid of $12,800 from Boyd Construction, taking it under advisement of the attorney.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, a question. I've just seen the, I have just reviewed the quotes here at the desk this evening. I noticed that the Boyd quote, which we're considering now for $12,800, specifies removal and disposal of one, off-site of one-story wood and masonry-framed house with basement and appurtenances. It does, I believe, Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there, separate from the house, a separate structure, a garage structure?
No, the garage's on the house.
Garage is on the house, it's all attached.
All right, are you interpreting the Boyd bid to include removal of all structures that are there?
Yes. The quotes were reviewed this morning by Dan Brown, our building inspector. Because if anybody in the town that's got the knowledge, it's Dan. And Dan's recommendation is that we accept the Boyd quote.
All right, the reason I raised that issue, I wasn't certain whether there were two structures or one. The Zeiss proposal, Mr. President, specifies that there's an existing garage structure. They have it broke out separately from the existing residential structure.
The garage is connected, there may be shed in the back, but that's not garage.
That was the only question I had.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Bruce, excuse me, we need a structure?
Right, yeah.
Okay, after the town.
The SWAT team will be doing some training there before we tear it down. We will, we will, so here's Mr. Spires.
Yes, sir.
We want to look at the week of the 13th of June because you'll be done with it by then.
Yeah, we'll be done, three days training, they're sponsoring Northwest Indiana law enforcement.
So, we want to look at the week of the 13th of June for the tearing down of this building.
This is Boyd.
All right, now, is there any other discussion?
No.
Yes, ma'am?
We're going to, I just figured we'd have issued a permit since we are the owners to ourselves. Oh, okay, all right, yes, that's going to be taken care of.
I know you were holding that one.
We'll take care of that. Is there any other discussion?
Oh, I got it all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six to...
Please, for your stability.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody for everybody's support and finally getting that ice board out. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's time for Sean's soapbox, ladies and gentlemen, so bear with me. 7150 Broadway, we had an order by our hearing officer, and I'm going to read you the first paragraph into the record because, again, this is sticking in my craw big time. "The matter came to be heard on May 20, 2016, before the undersigned hearing officer for the town of Maryville regarding a citation in order to make repairs issued on 8/31/15. The town of Maryville appeared by Town Attorney Michael Deppi. The owner appeared by his son Jim Stravoski and Council Robert Golding. The owner had previously advised that the property would be demolished by May 1, 2016. The owner now advises that the contractor had been hired has brought legal action against the owner, which accident is pending in court. The town moves for an immediate demolition order. Mr. President, I make a motion that we instruct Mr. Buscemi and Mr. Spires to get three quotes on demolishing 7150 Broadway at the town's expense and lien it. I'm tired of looking at it, I'm tired of the business owners on my side of Broadway talking to me about it. Enough's enough, done. We gave him a chance, I gave him a chance on May 20, Rich, and he blew it. He didn't have an action plan, he doesn't have anything. How long are we going to wait for the court action?"
I'm going to ask you, Councilman Pettit, to be patient. I was at the hearing.
Okay.
There, and they, he gave them the extra 30 days because we're trying to avoid being sued. If we issue an order, they still have, they can come back in 10 days and contest the order. And nothing still will happen. I think that if we do, if we go till the 17th of June, which is what we got right now, the 17th of June, and he doesn't do anything, we can do two things. We can go ahead and get the quote, and if he doesn't do anything on the 18th of June...
Then we're ready to go, exactly.
When we roll out that one on, after 122 West 55th Avenue, just have them roll right down Broadway.
I agree, yes. I can live with that, Rich. If we can go and get the numbers so we know what we're dealing with, that's acceptable. But, you know, it says right here, "Would be demolished by May 1st." He said that in a public meeting in front of Mr. Geekas and made that promise. That's not my fault that your contractor's suing you, find another contractor.
Right, yeah.
So, can that contractor put a lien on that property? If he's suing them, and if there's a lien on there...
He hasn't done the work to be paid for.
He'd have to have a judgment first before he could put a lien on it. And if he puts a lien on a vacant property where the building is already demolished, it's essentially a valueless lien.
I'll modify my motion, Mr. President, that we just obtain the quotes to be in a position after June 18th to make a move on 7150 Broadway.
And Councilman, I think there's a second reason why that's the wiser course of action. All things you've stated on the record are accurate. The matter is in the jurisdiction of the unsafe building hearing officer proceeding, and the town council should avoid superimposing and interposing its specific orders and directions and allow the unsafe building proceeding to run its course.
We've got to get quotes, we got to wait till the 18th, and then we don't have quotes, and then it lingers through July and then into August, and we're still there. Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion? It's motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Barron, that we go out for three quotes for the demolition of the residence located at 7150, the building, rather, 7150 Broadway. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six, zero. All right, that's the right way to do that one, Sean.
Okay.
General orders, ordinance, first reading ordinance, ordinance number 16-14, ordinance to town council, town of Maryville, amending the municipal code to enact a municipal street and road repair tax. And everybody beside.
I'll make a motion?
Oh.
Sorry.
I thought Bruce was going to make a...
Yeah, I thought he was going to do the presentation, that's why I didn't say anything.
Are you, Bruce?
Yeah, but you're first to second.
The council could make the motion, have the motion seconded to approve on first reading, and then you could have Bruce, Mr. President, make his presentation.
Chrissy, make a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, seconded by Councilman Pettit, that we approve ordinance number 16-14 for municipal street and road repair tax. Is there any discussion before Mr. Spires comes forward? Mr. Spires, you're up.
Okay, I've given everybody a packet. Presentation's sort of short just because I want to keep everybody's attention for a few minutes. It's on the proposed wheel excise tax, which we'll be talking about tonight. On the second page, it shows local road statistics. For everyone's knowledge, the town of Maryville has 178 miles of street. We are the fourth highest in Lake County. I'm giving you that information so that everyone realizes that there's an extreme need for this tax. We talked about before, the road asset management plan is being conducted by Robinson Engineering for grant eligibility. The management plan has to be done and turned into ENDOT for their approval. For those of you who don't know what a road asset management plan is, we've hired Robinson to go through, and they'll do a scoring system on all our streets, from bad to worse. So, when we do paving next year, we'll actually follow the management plan every year when they do updates and try to do the worst roads we can every year. As to the before, at one time, I think we just divided money up seven ways and off we went some years ago. And that certainly didn't work. So, this is going to help us in the long run for both of our paving and for the tax. House in Ackman, I'm sorry. Yeah, House Bill 1001, the ENDOT local road and bridge matching grant. The grant is a 50-50 grant. It's up to $500,000 from the state, well, we match with $500,000. Year 17, it's an estimate that there's going to be $150,000 to $185 million available in this grant. Which, if you just go by the $150,000, that would be 300 grants at $500,000. 2018 and 2019 is going to be percentages in the gas tax that's going to come to this program. The estimates on that is $70 million for 2018 and 2019. That's what they have programmed so far, that doesn't mean they're not going to do the program. They just haven't gotten far enough along to come up with a plan. That's going to be fiscally responsible for 2020. Potential funding, again, I just mentioned that it's a 50-50 local match. The match can come from our lowhead fund that we just received the money for, but it's only a one-time payment. And again, you've heard that it was for $674,533. That will help us one year, but it won't do any good for the following years. Rainy day fund, I think we got about $274 in our rainy day fund. And I think it's just excess, John, correct me, I've never really quite understood it, but it's always excess money that you would have in either funds that you just throw in in case there's an emergency. And we've never been lucky enough to save, to have that money available to do. So, the only thing that we have left to do would be the new wheel and surtax. The estimate right now is $700,000, that estimate comes from the Bureau of Motor Vehicle. When you go to register your vehicle starting in 2017, if this tax is passed as a motor vehicle, you will be paying $25 for the whole year. It's not monthly, it's $25 just for the whole year. Again, each award is capped at $1 million, which is 500%, I'm sorry, $500,000 for both the state and the local government. Have to have a management plan, and we have to get the wheel tax approved before July 1st. It takes a while for this all to get set up, it has to go to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. They have to go through and start figuring out exactly what's in the town of Maryville and what's in Ross Township. So, they don't want to take the Ross Township people and put them into Maryville, or I mean, the Hobart people, and they don't want to put the Maryville people as living in Hobart. So, this is going to take them a while to do. Also, it's going to take a while for them to set up the capture of the money. And then also, the Department of Revenue has to set up the items they need to do for this tax. So, the tax will start January 17th, I'm sorry, January 1 of 2017. This next page, I think, is really important.
Hold on, Bruce, for a second. Hey, Joe, there's some guy walking around, he went one way, now he's coming back that way.
Okay, I think this next page is really significant. It's fees versus bonding. Bonds are paid back with interest, fees based, will save the town interest payments. So, for an example, I figured $2.5 million bond, a five-year bond at only 2% year interest, at just 2%, it's $164,500. Remvenues from the wheel tax can be used to match grants without bonds. The next page is even more significant, it's the cost savings compared for a bond to a wheel excise tax plus the grant. Again, if your target number on both is $2.5 million, the bond, there's interest. The wheel tax, there is no interest. State funds on a bond would be zero, where state funds on a wheel, wheel excise tax plus grant would be $1,250,000. Total funds that would be used for $2.5 million bond would be $2,664,500. Town funds would only be $1,250,000. So, this would actually be a savings to the town of $1,414,500. The other thing I like about it is, and it's not on here, but I've been a homeowner in town for 27 years, and it would be nice to take something off of your property. Property taxes pay for a lot. If we went to go get a bond, it would be on our property tax. And as a property owner, I just think it's sort of nice that we're going to be able to use something different, a different avenue to generate money. So, when people, you know, come in and register, we're going by what you own as how many cars and not if you own property or not. Decreasing debt allows for more roadway improvement projects, town would continue to submit for these projects. The next page is just an informational sheet that we put in there from the American Society of Civil Engineers. You can look at that when you have time. Proposed local projects. Whitcomb Street, US 30th and 91st Avenue, it's 1.65 miles. Estimate cost of repaving is $325,000. Now, these roads that I'm talking about right now qualify for the programs we're doing because of the amount of traffic and that they serve not only Maryville, but they connect with other communities. Randolph, Randolph Street, the North Town Limits to 101st Avenue is 2.75 miles, and that's a cost of $710,000. Grand Boulevard is north of South Town Limits, it's two miles, but that road is in such bad shape that it has to be totally reconstructed, just like we've done with Colorado in the past play, there's nothing left of it. So, that's going to be $650,000. And then the last one that I've put in here is West 75th Avenue, I'm sorry, West 57th Avenue, Broadway to Chase Street, 2.25 miles, and that's at a cost of $315,000. Those four projects together are $2 million. Now, I didn't...
Bruce, that Whitcomb Street, that runs into Crown Point too, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, now, you had said at a workshop meeting, that's a $25 flat fee, right?
For the wheel tax, yes, ma'am.
For the wheel tax, for the first year, second year, third year.
Doesn't change, unless the state changes it.
Because Crown Point is charging $15 on the second year, from what I've read in the paper.
Correct.
And I think Portage or one of the other communities, they're pushing for a lower rate on the second year.
I don't know about Portage, but I know that Crown Point is.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's because they don't have the need for it or honestly, they're just trying to appease constituents that don't want the wheel back.
Crown Point is set up different than us as well because they have different entities that come in.
They have utilities.
They have utilities, we don't have utilities. Crown Point also has a different set of funds that come into them where they get more money coming in because they have another utility that comes in. We don't. So, we're very much behind Crown Point when you're talking about income.
Well, I had assumed since Crown Point was the city.
The city and the town, no difference.
No difference on this?
It's no difference because the city or a town, it's the way the city was set up and it's the way Maryville was set up. Our water, our sewers are two separate entities.
And it is. And it is, right.
And they have their own water.
You're talking about conservancy, right?
Right. But they have their own water as well. We do not. So shame on us.
Right. Well, if we were a city, would that change?
No.
It's too late now.
There's no benefit right now as to going to city.
Bruce, you said that this, in the presentation, there's a notation Roxanne and I were looking at. Is it July 1st of 2016 or 2017?
It should be 2016.
It is 2016. The tax goes into effect January 1st of 17 on your vehicle registration.
Right, yes.
And keep in mind, folks, when we get this asset management plan from Robinson, Bruce highlighted four of these, probably the bigger ones. There's going to be other, you know, connecting ones. You know, Rich, you've often talked about 53rd Avenue up on the north end needing work. There's others in all of our wards that, you know, could stand some, you know, some additional work. We just did Taney. So this will be beneficial for the longer, bigger stretches and course. My area of the Panhandle, I got those mile stretches, you know, Gene, that we just did Clay Street.
I wish there would be some type of improvements for our problems on county line.
County line, south and north, yeah.
And guys, don't forget.
That's part of it. I just don't think we'd do it. We'll be paying for that.
Or the tax as well. For Maryville Road and yours.
Oh, yeah, the TIF increment. Yeah, the TIF increment's probably going to be affected.
We don't have as much money to put in for paving.
The roads that I provided to you were just four roads that I knew right now that were really bad shape.
Those are intended to be examples.
Right.
The asset management plan and the evaluation will actually help identify what the priorities are.
But if we do four this year, John, we can do, we just go down the list from Robinson in 17 and in 18. This thing is going to be constant. It stays in place. You know, again, Bruce said it's $25 a year. If my IU math is right, John, that's about two bucks a month that this affects people as opposed to spending $375 on a tie rod because you hit a pothole on 57th Avenue. And, you know, we can't, you know, it's just economic sense is just that that sheet from, Roxanne's got it open, that rough road ahead from American Civil Engineers, looking at the benefits, the way they break that out.
I do want to-
Maybe we all kind of bookmark that. We get calls, we start, you know, talking to those folks about that, those kinds of statistics.
I do want to correct the record with respect to the other municipalities that have either passed the wheel tax ordinance or have it under consideration. At the direction of the council, I reviewed the various municipal ordinances and submitted to the council the comparison. The City of Portage has enacted its wheel tax ordinance effective, they enacted it earlier this month on May 4. As the council members know, a wheel tax ordinance is pending, but not yet passed in the City of Crown Point. But we obtained from the Clerk Treasurer's Office the pending City of Crown Point wheel tax ordinance. And it has a permanent rate of $25 per year per passenger vehicle. It does not have a reduction in the wheel tax in any subsequent year. So it's an ongoing annual rate of $25 per passenger vehicle. The council members will remember though, that Portage, their ordinance that's already enacted is somewhat different from Crown Point in this respect. For non-passenger vehicles such as motorcycles, recreational vehicles, and trailers, Portage has reduced the rate from the state permitted rate of either 25 or 40 dollars per year to 1,250 per year for non-passenger vehicles, motorcycles, recreational vehicles, and trailers. And the ordinance that the council is considering has that same reduction in it of 1,250 per year instead of 25 for motorcycles, 1,250 per year instead of 40, maximum rate allowed by state law for recreational vehicles, and 1,250 per year instead of 40 for trailers. So the ordinance that you're considering has the reduced rates for those non-passenger vehicles.
I was going to ask if there was, I thought in the state law, John, that trucks were 40 dollars.
The maximum that can be imposed is 40.
I just got one more item, and it's the last item here. 51 of 92 Indiana counties currently have adopted a wheel excise tax. This is nothing new in our state. This has been going on for years, so people know. This just wasn't something that we created the last session. There's counties that have been paying wheel excise tax for over 20 years to help supplement their budgets to do their routes. It's just Lake County never did. So now that the bill has allowed us to be able to do it as a municipality, we can go ahead and pass this.
Councilman Pettit, I want to correct the record. Under the state enabling law and under the proposed ordinance that you have under consideration, trucks with a declared gross weight that does not exceed 11,000 pounds are permitted to be assessed $25 per year. And that is what the current town ordinance proposes to do.
Okay, that's in section two.
Not 40.
And maybe, Mr. President, and to John, for the record, through Councilperson Barron, since she made the motion, maybe we read into the record, Chrissy, what the rates are going to be. I know Karen's out there, people have them, and then I'll, we can amend our motion. I mean-
Okay. With the passenger vehicle, $25 per year. Motorcycles, $12.50 per year. Trucks with declared gross weight that does not exceed 11,000 pounds, $25 per year. Motor-driven cycles, $12 per year.
My second's amended.
But I'll read this last one.
Oh.
And then buses, $40 a year. Recreational vehicles, 1,250 per year. Semi-trailers, $40 per year. And I'd like to amend my-
There's a couple others.
More, three more?
Okay. Tractors, 40. Trailers, 1,250 per year. Trucks, 40 per year.
There we go. My second.
I have a question for Bruce. And I have read-
Second's amended, Mr. President, according to Ms. Barron's motion.
Okay, can I continue with the question? Bruce, I have read and did a little research that the State of Indiana in 2014 allocated 400 or 500 million for road repairs. Northwestern Indiana and Northern Indiana never received a penny of that. Do you know about that fund?
No, I don't. I think that was more direct to state highways than it was actually to local agencies.
Well, it was supposed to be through the state, coming for the whole state, 400, I think it was 400 million. And nothing, it was allocated by the state, but we never got a dime or a penny up here in Northern Indiana.
Yeah, I don't recall. I mean, if you've got something I can look at and maybe I can find out.
Yeah, I do. I'll call you.
Yeah, but I don't recall that ever coming up. And I attend NERPC meetings and we all, and that kind of money would go through NERPC, and I don't ever recall that happening.
I will call you tomorrow and read it to you and where I got it from.
Okay.
Okay? Good.
Go ahead.
That's it.
Okay, a couple things, Bruce, that you touched on with this thing. And one is with the zip code, you know, where some people that live in Hobart have, and you've got three.
I got three.
Yep. But BMV is working on that now. We're not going to get all of that money from those other municipalities. That money's going to stay at home with them. And just like any money that where we've got something, somebody with our zip code, like say Gary, 52nd Avenue and Gary, that's a-
A Maryville zip.
That's a Maryville zip.
Okay.
So, you know, at one point, we thought we were going to be in great shape and get a lot of money. We're not going to be there.
But is that reflected in the 700,000?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Cause our chief's got a Crown Point mailing address.
So can you move a little closer north, Joe, so we can get that 25?
To the 9,000 block there, Joe. 8900 block.
That's the Bureau of Motor Vehicles' best guess estimate right now. Once we send them the signed ordinance, they will then start going through the process of, and I will tell you, probably the first year, it might be a little difficult because somebody's going to, yeah, is going to get charged where they're not supposed to be charged.
Exactly.
Finding out that people might not be getting charged where they should be. So hopefully after the first year, we can get those items corrected.
And then here's the other caveat that I know, I don't know how many people have gotten phone calls on this, but it's the Illinois plates.
Oh, I did.
I haven't gotten any calls on the wheel tax.
Because you don't have any apartment complexes.
True, yeah.
But that's one, Joe, chief, that's one that we're going to, I don't know how we can address it, the people that live in apartment complexes with Illinois plates. At some point, because I've got emails from people that said, I don't mind paying the $25 and I live in an apartment complex, but what are we going to do with the people that live in apartment complexes?
Yeah, a lot of the apartment complexes have been hammered down on it. You know, one of our officers runs security for multiple complexes in there. They've been ticketing and telling the vehicles that they're out of state plates. They give them so long to comply with, unless it's a business car parked there and that guy drives it home. And a lot of times, people don't realize it. A lot of times, it's a business car from Illinois and they drive it home. But right now, I'm aware that there's a problem. But a lot of the major apartment complexes have been making sure the owners are compliant and are putting stickers on their cars. If they're not, they have a tow firm to tow the car away at night and they pick it up to the pound.
And there's the other part of that, is that, the other way that you can address it too, is that if you look at these schools, MIS, Pierce, the high school, when these parents are dropping these kids off in the morning or picking them up in the afternoon, a lot of Illinois plates, a lot of Illinois plates. I'm not saying that we're going to fix it right now.
Sure.
But I'm saying that we need to formulate a plan because, you know, when next, in two weeks from now, when people come in, that's going to be one of the things that we hear. And it's going to be a bone of contention that we have to address. And I just think that-
We can address it.
It's better to be proactive and saying that we're working on it.
And I can remind, sure, Mr. Buscemi can, we just can't knock on somebody's front door.
No.
If they're stopped on the roadway and they have an Indiana driver's license with this Illinois tag, sure, you can write a ticket.
Right, I understand. And that's how we have to, we just have to know, we just have to know that that's out there.
Yeah, and that's out there. We do it all the time.
Okay. Anything else under this proposed ordinance? Roll call, please. Took a little nap there?
Yeah, well, yeah, I did. Okay, span.
I haven't made up my mind.
Sorry. Abstain?
Yeah.
Okay. Use that.
Abstain.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Haraway?
Yes. Motion carries with four and two abstentions. First reading. That concludes first reading of ordinances. That there are no second reading of ordinances. Resolutions. Resolution of Town of Maryville, Town Council authorizing a request for transfer from the Lake County Board of Commissioners of real property located at 5612 Broadway, 5618 Broadway, and 5624 Broadway.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve Resolution 16-14. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Resolution 16-15, a resolution, Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2016 budget within certain categories.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve Resolution 16-15. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Resolution 16-16, resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the extension of current temporary loans to December 31st, 2016.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Resolution 16-16. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I guess to Bruce and maybe Gene, we're extending these loans until the end of the year. I guess the one concern I have is on line item 304 Maryville Road TIF project fund. We're decreasing by $700,000, Bruce. And increasing Mississippi Street project fund by $700,000.
No, what this is, is that actually, I need to have a conversation. We borrowed money at the beginning of the year from Mississippi Street TIF.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, from Maryville Road TIF to the Mississippi Street TIF. And I think all this is doing is extending the current temporary loans.
Going to get a draw in June, isn't he?
And it does, it does state that in the now there are four clause.
Right.
That the same existing loans are being extended until December 31st, 26th.
Yes, but as I've told everyone before when we did this, that as soon as we get our draws in June.
Right.
We will be paying back the Maryville Road TIF fund.
All right.
So that loan will go away.
Okay. All right, well, just, we've got a-
This is just a procedural thing that she had to do.
All right. Just so everybody's aware, Councilwoman Barron's got a subdivision that we're going to be talking about here in a minute. And we're talking about extending 86th Avenue and we're-
In a park.
We're decreasing Maryville Road TIF by $700,000. It caught my eye. Sorry, Chrissy.
In a park, no, it's okay. In a park, in a park, in a park.
For the record, Bruce, that's already a loan that exists now and we're extending it.
All these are.
With the intent of repaying it.
So when the draws come in in June or July?
These will get paid.
These will get paid.
At least that one will. That's the one that I know of.
All right.
I don't think we need to worry about the 82nd Road though for another year or two. They won't be ready for that road till what, until the second phase goes in, correct?
No, they got to get in there.
They can get in there now.
They can get in there now, but-
But we can discuss that in new business when we go through the items for them.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor of Resolution 16-16?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That concludes resolutions, BGA action. Petitioner Trinity Memorial Evangelical Lutheran Church, the owner is Trinity Memorial. The request is the variance of use approval to allow two message-centered sign additions to a legal non-conforming existing brick church sign to increase the size of the electronic message center sign of 20 square feet to 32 square feet for both panels and to allow the V of the proposed electronic message center sign to be increased from 10 feet to 11 feet apart at the furthest point. Purpose for advertising church times and functions, 7950 Marshall Street, Zoned R2, single-family residential, case number Z8UV1-0416. Anybody here for this?
Good evening. Richard Anderson, 9211 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. We're talking about the church that's actually on Highway 30 across from the Cadillac dealer. And basically, they have a sign now. And what they do is they put up banners. So in order not to have to put up banners and change banners, they kind of sit back far off the road. The church is probably built, trying to figure out, the church has been existent for 75 years, but I don't think at that location, I'm figuring about 50. And so this is a brick sign that's existing that matches the church. So these panels, which are four by eight, so 32 square feet on each side, those right now would then turn into digital so they could advertise the Bible camp and whatever they're doing.
Any questions for anybody?
I think this looks nice. And I lived in Young America. We moved in in 72 and this church was here. So I'm not too sure how long it's been there, but when-
Longer than most of the businesses on 30.
In Young America, that was there.
They have also helped with the voting on Election Day. They set up a polling place there and the minister's very kind.
It's kind of unusual because it's in a commercial area, but yet it's a zoned residential piece, so it's kind of strange.
Very nice place.
Yes, you're right. I'll make a motion. We approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, but second by Councilwoman Youth-elect, that we approve case number Z8UV1-0416. Any further discussion?
With conditions?
You want to read the conditions in?
With this petitioner, we have a supplemental.
Thank you very much. With that condition, your motion good with the conditions, Chrissy?
Yes.
Your second, Marge?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Uh, sec, the second one, case number Z one six U V two dash zero four one six, veterans of foreign wars post fifteen sixty-three. Uh, the owners, the veterans of foreign wars post fifteen sixty-three, they're looking for variance of use approval for a proposed electronic message center sign, and to increase the size of the proposed message center sign from twelve point eight square feet to twenty point six square feet for the purpose of new identification and advertising signs of the VFW located at sixty-eight eighty. Hendricks, Mr. Shirley, how are you?
How are you, council members? This is existing sign. It's about twenty years old, and held together with nails and glue, and the letters wind up in the cemetery when windy days. This is a proposed new sign. Just a little eye candy. Instead of these six by sixes, there's, uh, bricks. This sign right here, the top portion, stays the same. The bottom is the one that we would advertise, and that would also go off. I think we talked at ten PM, eleven, eleven PM. Uh, our members are getting older. We've been wanting this sign for years. We just couldn't afford it. We can now. So we're asking for your approval.
Thank you. Any, any questions from Mr. Shirley? Okay, entertain the motion.
No move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Span, that will approve, uh, case number Z one six U V two dash four, zero four one six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
How many years has post fifteen sixty-three been in existence?
Well, actually, here, Mr. Buscemi, right?
I am, sir, and you know why I'm asking you.
Yes, I do.
All right.
The Buscemi post, this, our post was established in nineteen seventy-eight. Buscemi Post and the McKenzie Post, which was in Gary, consolidated. They come out here and bought that land, and it became known as, you can't name a post after a name unless they're dead, or you can call it Ameriville Memorial, Crown Point Memorial. So they chose Ameriville, and, um, we've since, uh, been going at it ever since.
So with the, with the consolidation, uh, post, our Ameriville post fifteen sixty-three, with the consolidation, really then dates back to the nineteen fifties?
It actually dates back to nineteen twenty-four.
All right.
Rick did a lot of remodeling in there.
Ninety, ninety-two years of history, is that correct?
Number one in the...
Serving veterans.
For three years, and number eight in the country.
Are they serving any fish?
We're very active with the, donating to the SWAT team, and we have a, what's the FOP? We, we have a standing order of a thousand apiece for them, and Bob Morton, right? Him and Curtis comes over and gets our contributions every year. We're going at it. Thank you all for your approval.
Rick, did they start serving the fish again, or are they waiting?
Yes, they have been. They just stopped it from Lent last Friday, but now they do it one Friday, the first Friday of the month of the summer.
Okay.
Then they're back at the weekends.
Okay, very good.
They serve during the week as well. Good. Thank you.
All right.
Case, uh, that concludes BZA action. Uh, in the old business. In the old business. New business.
Mr. President, I have two things underneath the new business. The first thing is, is I got an irrevocable standby letter of credit from Hunter's Glen, Phase One, um, for the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents, and in lieu of a performance bond that I'd like to make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we accept the, uh, letter of credit from Hunter's Glen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President and members of the council, with the consent of Councilwoman Barron and Councilman Pettit, I'd suggest that the motion be, as she stated, to accept this letter of credit, to authorize the town council president and clerk treasurer to execute it, and to direct the clerk treasurer then to maintain the original copy in his records of the executed letter of credit.
Okay, so everything else looks good on it, John?
Yes.
Okay.
The second is amended as well.
Thank you. Uh, if no other, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
And then my second thing, Mr. President, is subdivision development agreement for Hunter's Glen as well. It's where the developer will, um, hold up to the construction of subdivision standards, the financial security, um, inspections, completion of public improvements, performance acceptance, and maintenance bonds, or other acceptable security, accepted of home improvement, or, I'm sorry, improvements, the warranty, special provisions, interpretation of venue, attorney fees, um, transferability, and that's all.
Councilman, on this, the second item, the subdivision development agreement, I've got a, I've got a question for Durinda, if she has the answer, or, and/or for Bruce. The copy that's been given to us here at the table is not signed by the developer.
Correct.
Do we have a copy that is signed by the developer?
What's going to happen is, is that since we've passed the letter of credit, um, Richard's going to sign it, and Gene's going to sign it, and it's not going to leave this building until the developer also signs the development agreement. So we're going to approve it tonight. We, we want to get, we want to get this project going again, and we're, it's going to be three more weeks till we have a meeting. So we're going to approve our end of this and, and execute it. It's then going to go to the developer to sign. And once he signs it, then we'll release the executed letter of credit to the bank.
All right. The second question I have regarding this, the unsigned development agreement, Bruce, if you, or Durinda have the answer, on page two, in section four, it states that developer agrees to install all public improvements except final surface coat of asphalt no later than June thirty, twenty sixteen. Is that actually the date, with today being May twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, that this developer is promising to complete all public improvements except final surface coat?
He's almost done, John.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearts before, yeah, we won't go. Yeah. But definitely for Phase One, but yes, that is correct, John.
Uh... You keep that, I, I...
We don't want the letter of credit null, null and void, however, we, we do...
Mr. President, if I could recommend, John, um...
Developer's signature on the development agreement, that's critical.
Well, here's what we do.
To allow us to enforce it. Without a signature, we can't enforce it.
Well, he can't pull a building permit. I just signed the MyLars as Plan Commission President last year when this got approved. I say we put a condition on this, that until this is signed, Durinda not release MyLars. That way, he can't pull building permits if he doesn't have a Mylar, right? Brian Deering hasn't signed it as secretary, and Robinson hasn't signed it as town engineer, so he can't take it to the county yet. I was the first one to sign it. I say we hold him up via the Mylar and the recorded subdivision if he doesn't sign this development agreement.
And along with releasing the letter of credit to the bank.
That's a, those are good suggestions for both the councilmen. So the, the motion would be to accept and authorize execution by the town council president and the clerk treasurer of the subdivision development agreement for Hunter's Glen North, Phase One, subject to the developer signing it.
Executing it.
And...
Failure to do so will result in the Mylar not being released by the Town of Ameriville for recordation, and the letter of credit, Bruce?
Right. We're not going to release this unless he signs the agreement.
Right.
Yeah, because I'm not going to mess with him.
Yeah. Long time.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Durinda?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that one's okay.
I changed the date from the twentieth of May to the twenty-fourth.
Right, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, now, are we ready?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Major, you put this original someplace real safe.
Where's the originals at? You got them?
I have them. You're going to sign them?
Huh?
You're going to sign them?
Okay.
Because I believe the originals get lost.
Okay.
That's so crazy. You can't produce originals.
Right, yeah, no.
Ultimately, after everything is executed, a copy should be retained.
Right.
The planning office, by Durinda, the originals, including the letter of credit, should be retained in Gene's office.
Yes, sir.
Like me.
Okay, uh, at this time, we're going to open it up for public comment, and if there's any public comment, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment.
I have a question. My name is Tina Wilson. I live at sixty-nine eighty-one Massachusetts. I live next door to a daycare center that has greatly changed its character in the last ten years. And I want to know how I go about getting their variance revisited, because it is a residential area. And I'm kind of in the position, I've called code. The worst of it happens after code has gone home. So then I call the police, and they say, "Well, you have to call code." So I'm kind of in a really bad position. It, it's pretty unbearable. It's not just myself.
What's, what are the things that's happening now?
It's the noise. I, I also live a few hundred feet from Clifford Pierce School, and the noises, I never hear them.
You take Catherine all the way up north, Rich, she, it dead ends. The daycare's right there, and then Mrs. Wilson is up Massachusetts.
And, and the noises, I turned on Seventy-third and Catherine Street, and I could hear the screaming. And if you have ever heard forty hours of a basketball banging against your fence, you haven't lived. So I, I, I mean, it, it just, it's become one of the government, you know, childcare centers.
Right.
The ages have increased, the numbers have greatly increased. There's no control. I've been threatened, my life has been threatened by children. My dog has been threatened. I mean, it's ridiculous. The traffic starts before six AM. I, I really think it needs to be revisited.
We would have to look at it, Mrs. Wilson, uh, through Durinda's records, see what was granted, how they were permitted. Uh, if it's a use variance or special exception, it could come to us administratively, John, that she could go to the BZA.
Well, they, they also... They put up a giant wooden fence that blocks the street light, and now, just in the last month, my car's being vandalized, and...
I told, is this, what's the ordinance for fences?
Six foot.
Okay, then if it's taller than six foot, then we knock it down.
We need to send Vicky back out.
Well, it's solid wood, too.
That's a...
I had a six-foot chain link, so, you know, my dog wouldn't...
This is taller than your six-foot chain link?
Mm-hmm.
That's okay.
All right, there's one violation.
Yeah, because craftsmen make something that to take that down.
Well, because they, they, it's hi, it's higher because they also asphalted, so now I'm flooding. And in fact, that whole part of the street floods now.
Well, Mr. Lake will take, he'll address that part.
All right. I appreciate it, because I feel so frustrated.
Yeah, no, we will, I will talk to Vicky tomorrow.
And Mrs. Wilson came in about, what, two months ago, you and Durinda and I spoke?
I have been in a few times.
And we, we sent Vicky back out there, and, uh, obviously, they have not heated, um...
You, you can tell the difference when the owners are present and not. I mean, it's like two different schools, so...
What do we need to do, Sean, as far as getting it before, what are we going to do if, when the council's before?
Well, Durinda's going to have to look up the case number and see what exactly was granted, and what year, and what condition.
First.
Back in the eighties? All right, it might take her a couple of days to dig that out of the records. We'll figure out if there were conditions.
People bought it ten years ago, and it changed so much.
This is why we, you know, I kind of take credit for, we came up with the Pettit clause of this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. That way, when that thing got sold, they should have had to have come back in, and we should have known who we were dealing with. Now, we've got to spend time on staff to research it, and we just, we need to know who's doing business in the town, because now I got a taxpayer that's unhappy.
Very. I'm looking at, at homes in other areas, honestly, because I'm not safe in my own yard, so...
Right, yeah. We understand. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements. Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, May twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, six thirty PM. Town Hall offices will be, with the exception of emergency services, will be closed on Monday, May thirtieth, in observance of Memorial Day. Uh, to piggyback off of that, the Fire Department and, um, the, I don't know, it's the Fire Department, Volunteer and Fire, Regular Fire, will be having their silent parade from the Legion over to the, uh, Veterans Memorial, and they will have a brief program. I've been asked to speak along with, uh, Joe Shute. So we will be saying something on Memorial Day over at our, uh, statue. Uh, Police Commission Meeting, June third, twenty sixteen, at eight AM. Stormwater Management Board Meeting, June seventh, twenty sixteen, at four thirty PM. Plan Commission Workshop Meeting, June seventh, twenty sixteen, at six thirty PM. Next town council meeting is June fourteenth, uh, twenty sixteen, at six thirty PM.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Not good.
We're done.
All ladies.